We'll call our, sorry.
Ready to go.
At seven thirty, we'll call our April fourth Little Falls City Council meeting to order. Let's say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off all cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda. Approve the agenda as posted in accordance with the open meeting law. And here in place all agenda items on the table for discussion. I do want to point out item seven A1, the brush and leaf collection should say city sanitary. What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by council member Starley, second by council member Knopfler. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approval of the minutes. Special work session meeting of March twenty first two thousand twenty-two and the regular meeting of March twenty first two thousand twenty-two. Approve. What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion by council member Lundberg, second by council member Lildegren. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approval of the bills, checks one zero six four six zero through one zero six five one one totaling two hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars, seventy cents. Approve. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Second.
Motion by council member Gossiak, second by council member Starly. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Awards, donations, presentation, and proclamations. A presentation, Camp Ripley Economic Impact and Update. Welcome, General.
All right, very good. So, good evening, Lowell Cruz, and I'm super pleased to be here as part of this. This is the inaugural run of my two thousand twenty-two Camp Ripley Updates season. So, we do about, I don't know, twenty of these across the community in the spring in an effort to uphold the third leg of my mission statement, which is to be the best community partner I can be. And so, we open ourselves up, give you some information, but more importantly, give you a chance to give me feedback if there's something that I need to address or take back. So, with that, please go to the next slide. And as I stated, like most organizations, we have core values, and these core values are encompassed in my mission statement. My mission statement is to provide the best training facilities and resources to train your nation's military for our country's worst day and for your state's first responders for their worst day. And while doing that, my job is to be the best neighbor to Morrison County and the city of Little Falls that I can be. So, next slide, please. So, as we go through this, I always like to remind everybody that I have a boss. And so, this is my boss. This is Major General Sean Manke. He's your adjutant general of the Minnesota National Guard, and he's supported by CSM Brian Soper, who's the Senior Enlisted Leader for the Minnesota National Guard. General Manke's been in place now since the summer of two thousand twenty, and that's a seven-year term for him. So, you should see his face for a while, hopefully. So, next slide. We did change the leadership of the Thirty-Fourth Infantry Division. When I briefed this last year, the general in charge of the division was a good friend of mine that I deployed with the first time in two thousand four by the name of Major General Mike Wickman. Mike got the opportunity to go to Europe and be a part of the European Command structure. And so, he's over and probably counting Ukrainians right now and Russians. But he's been replaced by Brigadier General Charles Kemper, who's the new division commander, and his assistant is CSM Michael Whitehead. Mike's claim to fame, besides being the CSM of the Thirty-Fourth Infantry Division, is he's also the national president of the disabled American veterans. So, we've got some great connectivity throughout those organizations, even outside of the guard. So, next slide. And then finally, my leadership of Camp Ripley, I continue to be the assistant adjutant general, as well as the Camp Ripley Senior Commander. And this is the last year of Colonel Josh Seimer's time as our Garrison Commander. He'll be replaced this fall, so you'll have a new face on this chart next year. And I'm supported by CSM Marcus Erickson as the Installation Command Sergeant Major. Next slide, please. So, as you can see, we continue to be an economic driver in the Morrison County area with what totals almost eighty-seven million dollars worth of economic impact into that. The majority of that is payroll. So, and obviously, Little Falls is one of the three largest communities where our employees live and work. So, these are your neighbors, your friends, and your relatives, hopefully. The second line there is our construction projects, and that really is what drives a lot of the differences from year to year in our overall economic impact. And we'll talk about some of the construction projects we're doing right now. Overall, we've got eight hundred to almost a thousand federal and state employees that work on Camp Ripley. And I'd like to sometimes tell you how many live in your community, but I don't have that written down here for some reason. So, but, next slide. So, some of our two thousand twenty-one accomplishments. We, two thousand twenty-one was a busy year for us with DOD and civilian customers. Again, if you can see, hosted almost five hundred and fifty thousand mandates. And if you remember other briefs, we were in the four hundred thousand mandates. So, we were busy this last year, but it really was, it was strange. It wasn't a busy season of ATs. We had a lot of soldiers that were on federal orders supporting the state for the COVID response. So, we mobilized a lot of soldiers in and out of Camp Ripley, and they did things like, you know, helping long-term healthcare facilities, help with COVID testing and vaccination areas. And so, they were really busy with that. Last spring, in February, or I want to say March now, we had a, the first C seventeen aircraft that I remember seeing land on my airfield, and they delivered a bunch of dudes from Kentucky, a Kentucky Air National Guard unit that were here in February last year to test their ability to survive in extreme cold weather, make sure their generators, they knew how to run their generators without them jowing up and all that. That unit's got a mission to go and set up airfields in Canada and in cold regions. So, that's why they were here. We also expanded our diving opportunities. The Navy was here in the spring of twenty-one, and they brought along their Coast Guard buddy. So, this year, in February, we hosted the newly installed Coast Guard Ice Diving School at Camp Ripley. So, the Coast Guard's going to send all their divers through Camp Ripley to learn how to dive under the ice. So, that's pretty cool. The one-nine armor, one-nine-four armor out of Brainerd mobilized out of Camp Ripley. We mobilized about a thousand soldiers. They spent nine months in Kuwait. They got the opportunity to go to the Kabul Airport and secure that in last August as part of the evacuation out of Afghanistan. They have the pride in being one of the first Army units at the airport. They were acting in a role as the quick reaction force for CENTCOM, so that's why they were there first. But they, they're pretty proud of the fact that they welcomed the Eighty-Second Airborne to the airport when they got there and told them where they could fall in on the perimeter. So, pretty, pretty cool mission for those kids and pretty significant for us as a nation. The State Patrol hosted two academies here. They're trying to get caught up with some of their officer numbers after skipping an academy or two and due to COVID. And so, they did a spring academy. They graduated in the May timeframe, and then another one in the summer. And they're doing that again this coming year as well. Our open house in September was one of the largest on record. I want to say it was because we're cool, but I think it's just because people wanted to start to get out, and the open house was a good chance to do that. So, we had over six thousand people come onto Camp Ripley and learn about the equipment and what we do there the first weekend or the second weekend in September, and that was pretty cool. And then finally, here in February, we hosted the Chief National Guard's Biathlon. We had great snow conditions this year, and the Biathlon range was really the place to be in February for a lot of activity. And in last summer, we were pretty excited. We celebrated, I cut a cake down in Deep Park Woods on the ninetieth birthday of Camp Ripley. And so, we got a lot of work to do in the next ten years to figure out how to celebrate it for its hundredth and make that pretty special, but we were pretty proud to make ninety. Next slide, please. So, I added this slide last year as a public reference for you. So, I get a lot of questions sometimes from the community and from other people on how does your guard get into your community and help? So, this is kind of the process map of, and it starts with an emergency that has exhausted all your capability. And with that, then, a request goes to the sheriff for assistance. The sheriff notifies the HSEM, and they help write an executive order that the governor signs, and that allows us as guardsmen to respond into your community, do all sorts of different things there on the right. We like to help with, you know, emergency response, you know, that's our bread and butter. But the last couple of years, we've been important inside of security as well, especially down in the Twin Cities. And so, we have a lot of, a lot of people that felt good about what they did with the COVID response over this last year. A lot of our soldiers were pretty proud of that. And the soldiers that worked in the long-term healthcare facilities, the feedback we got back from them was that they were very proud to be guardsmen and to do that kind of work. So, you know, we made the best of a bad situation there, and we're glad that they're, they're staffed and that we're off of that mission now, but in reality, it was, it was worthwhile as well. Next slide. So, some construction updates. We continue to upgrade the tin hut, tin hut housing that we have on Camp Ripley. We're finishing up the first area that we concentrated on, and that is Area Five. So, we're adding, we added two long houses last summer that were complete, and we are in the middle of construction, constructing the final two right now, so that'll be done. We added the new battalion headquarters in what we call Area Nine. So, a new place for battalion staffs to work and with more space. We had the grand opening of our fire hall here last Friday, so hopefully, you'll see some of that in the newspaper if you weren't there. But we had a, we had renovated a large building for them to store their vehicle and equipment in, what we referred to as the hem building. And next to it now, we have built a admin living quarters, fire hall for our firefighters. It holds three engines, as well as it has dorm rooms for seven firefighters and offices and break room and kitchen for them. So, they're, they're living in tall cotton in my fire department right now. And I was, we were talking about it beforehand, but I'm pretty proud of their ability to get out in the community and respond. I think my fire department alone in the last month has responded for, I think, five times now out into the community to either help with the fire, to be the first department in at a place like Fort Ripley to put out a fire. And yesterday, we were involved in the ice rescue that we had going on in the Mississippi River. So, from my point of view, that's, that's community enhancement that fits right in the middle of my being the best partner I can be, offering that service back to the community. And then finally, we're, if you come onto camp, you'll see that we've invested some money into parking lots. Our soldiers no longer arrive on Camp Ripley on a train or a bus. They all drive their own POV's. And like a lot of other cities, I, I have parking problems. So, we're, we're expanding our parking lot areas. Next slide. So, some current and future projects. If you come on camp right now, you'll see a separate slide regarding Nelson Hall. We are working on six vehicle storage buildings, which are nice big machine sheds that we're going to store our Bradley Fighting Vehicles in. We've hauled, I don't know, thousands of truckloads of dirt out of Camp Ripley. What we're doing is we are creating storm retention ponds or basins along the Mississippi River at camp. So, if you come into camp north of Deep Park Woods, you would see a storm basin that's probably two football fields long and about two football fields wide. And there's, there's two other ones that are smaller than this large one. But the purpose of that is all our storm sewers now are hooked into those basins. And so, we have the capability of taking and catching up to a two-inch rain. All that hard surfaces, camp, parking lots, roads, motor pools, all that, that all that water runs into my storm basins. It'll all go into these catch basins, basically, and leach back into the aquifer rather than dumping all that water out in the Mississippi. So, that's the purpose of them basins. We're working on, trying to figure out how to fix the front end of Area Five. We've demoed that old area, so if you come onto camp by our education center, you'll see a big pile of dirt, and they're going to build me a battalion headquarters building there, but we've demoed all the mess halls and the other areas, and we will slowly rebuild buildings back in that area over the next five years. This summer, we're going to start designing here this next month, the rail spur project, and that'll go out for bid and probably be constructed next year to add two half-mile-long rail spurs inside a camp, which will become more loading capability for me. So, it'll, when complete, I'll be able to load two trains at once, all in an effort to make my, my armor brigade as mobile as I can be to get it out the door in case of a national emergency. And finally, we're working through the upgrade of our microgrid. The next phase of that is a, is the SCADA system that'll help balance the electricity that comes out of our solar field and out of our generators. And later this summer, we'll open the Joint Emergency Response Training Center, another training apparatus that we've been working with the state Fire Marshal to design and install at Camp Ripley. It'll be a series of rail cars that are in various stages of derailment. These cars will have the ability being of having fire on them, so local fire responders can learn how to respond to an oil car spill and fire and, and train on how to take care of that. There'll also be natural gas wellheads that they can simulate being on fire as well so that they can train fire departments on how to respond to pipeline problems as well. Next slide. So, I saved this for its own slide. We are renovating Nelson Hall. Nelson Hall's one of our, is on the historic register. It's one of the first buildings built on the installation. It was built as the post commander's headquarters. It's on the south end of my airfield, and we're putting several million dollars into renovating it. And when complete here this summer, we will move my headquarters back into the historic headquarters building, and we'll have a modern headquarters inside a very antique and old-looking building. And what that'll give us is we'll move out of the, the Training and Community Center, the TAC or the Armory that's on the west side of the airfield, and that will, that allow the units that are assigned there to have more space for their admin work. Next slide. And then, just a quick update on the museum. We're in the middle of designing it, and then we kind of quit because they decided that the bonding money they did receive from the state bond was, was with the increase in prices that we're all experiencing with inflation and construction costs, wasn't enough to build the kind of building that they were hoping to get. And so, they're going back to the bonding cycle to get an additional ten million dollars. So, when done, it'll be a twenty-four million dollar structure, and it'll be pretty phenomenal the way we have it currently designed. So, we'll see what the state legislature does with that request. It's not the only one that has short money from previous bonding cycles. So, the expectation is that it'll be supported. And, and as we briefed last year, we're going to move a portion of my headquarters services out there. So, if you're a veteran, you'll be able to go to, stop at our museum and get your ID card updated there. You'll get a chance to meet with, you know, my, my soldiers will be able to interact directly with our Family Assistance Center folks or with recruiters in that section of the building that'll be our portion of that structure. Next slide. So, the next three slides talk about our training load and kind of give you an idea how noisy of a neighbor will be throughout the summer. And let me tell you, we plan to have a large influx of troops throughout the whole summer. Part of this is because Fort McCoy was the home of Afghan refugees, and so, a lot of units from Wisconsin that would normally go to Fort McCoy when they were planning their training, didn't know when the refugees would be leaving Fort McCoy. And so, they shifted their training load to Camp Ripley. So, we start in May with a field artillery battalion out of Iowa, and we, if we go back to this, in April here, we'll do some turkey hunting. This coming weekend, we've got a best wire competition, and then we start our aviation ATs. But more importantly, I start in, on the eleventh of May, three artillery battalions back-to-back firing at Camp Ripley. So, throughout May, early June, we'll be producing a lot of artillery firing noise. Next slide. And you can see that the numbers there for June continue to hang right where they're at for, for May and right around that seventy to ninety thousand mandates a month. And we're, we'll have some regional units coming in, more field artillery, but also the Minnesota Officer Candidate School will be working through their OCS, and we'll be hosting units from the five-state region around us. So, also some units, obviously, from out of state will be here. And then, as we roll into July, so we were ninety thousand in June, and July and August, we're about, we're a little less. We're in the sixty thousands per month, but still, some additional field artillery units. The one-two-five is fielding new howitzers. They're the batter, they're the battalion from New Ulm. They're getting new upgraded field artillery howitzers, and so, they'll be in the field in, in July firing those, as well as some units from Wisconsin and South Dakota. And finally, July's the month that we do our youth camp, and we'll get the opportunity this year to do a full-up youth camp. We've been doing that the last couple of years, but it's been completely modified and constrained, trying to keep the kids safe, and now we can let them do a lot of the old activities that they used to do. Next slide, please. So, August looks a lot like July in numbers, but it's a little different, the fact the engineers come in August, so we'll have a lot more demo work being done on our demo ranges, so you'll hear explosions from that, as well as we'll finish the State Patrol Academy in August as well. So. And then, looking ahead to the fall, our snowplow drivers come in September, so they'll be doing two iterations of snowplow driving in September and October. The State Patrol Academy continues running from August through October, and then the typical archery hunts that we normally see in the muzzleloader hunt in November are all events that you'll see this fall again. Next slide, please. So, just to highlight, we, Camp Ripley's full of partners from the state of Minnesota, permanent staffs is the State Patrol and the DNR and the HSEM. They're all housed in the building that we call the Emergency Management Training Center, and I'm pretty proud of that ability to have the State Patrol and the DNR academies will be occurring at the same time this summer. So, we've actually got interaction between those state agencies and their training as well. They do similar training. You would think that they would have already done that, but getting them co-located in the same building has really fostered a little more interaction and integration. Next slide, please. So, some information to remember as we work through community outreach. In this, this September, we'll have the Camp Ripley Open House again. Throughout the year, we're starting our season of school bus, or fifth-grade students coming to do all sorts of tours. And so, after a couple of year hiatus of that, we'll have a lot of kids back. We're hosting a tribal consultation here with the local tribes here this next month. And later in the year, we'll do our tribal interaction event that we call Planning for the Future, a great outreach to the tribal high schools and bringing Native American kids out of the class and into Ripley and doing some interaction with us. And then, as we go through, we're pretty proud of our effort to help fill a hundred gift cards or gift tags every year around Christmas for the, the toy drive that's done here in Little Falls, as well as the, the food drives that we do on Camp Ripley to support the food shelves, and then all our hunts and fishing events on the bottom there. So, you can tell that we've got a lot of community involvement and outreach that will be planned at camp. So, next slide. And then, our environmental program continues to be award-winning. You know, they're obviously responsible for taking care of the wildlife and the fauna on Camp Ripley, and they help us integrate that with military training, and we do a really good job of doing both at the same time. And just in the highlighted box in the bottom is all the different agencies across the state that come in and make sure that we're doing the things right. And I'm pretty proud of the fact that I really don't have to worry about any environmental problems because my team has a great approach and keeps us, keeps us on the right side of the law and, more importantly, what's right. So. Next slide, please. And they couldn't do that without the partnerships we have. So, this, in this, in May here, we'll start to see a whole group of interns that come for the summer from St. Cloud and from Central Lakes College. One of the cool things that we've added into my environmental staff team is we're housing a, a, a forester that is a federal asset paid by, paid for by the, the natural, the, NRCS. And so, that individual is, his job is to work with local farmers around Camp Ripley to talk about how they can control their flammable forests and, and grasses and that so that we have less likelihood of a wildfire coming from off Camp Ripley onto the installation. So, there's, there's money involved with some of those programs for landowners to help with wildland burning as well and their own lands. And so, kind of a cool partnership there that we're proud of working with. Next slide. And speaking of burning, we, we've got a lot of stuff to burn off here in the next month when the snow quits snowing every other day. So, we're planning to burn about thirteen thousand acres of training area this year. We do that annually, the thirteen to fifteen thousand acres, and, and so, we've, we'll have about a three-week period that we can get that work done before the first part of May here. So, you'll start, you'll hear public announcements on the radio station and things like that of when we're, we're burning so that we can help keep the public and informed. Next slide. And finally, just a highlight of our ACUBs and the landscape. We just, I was just signing some new documents that approved some more acreage to go into ACUB. We had some money that was, that wasn't used, so we're adding a few more landowners into that. We've got about thirty-five thousand acres enrolled. And just as a reminder, that, that's a program that's trying to fight against encroachment of our installation and try to keep forest forests and farmer land, farmland, farmland. And so, about two hundred and fifty willing landowners are waiting for us to find more money at the end of the year, so maybe we can enroll some more acres. And once again, we're, we're well on our goals of protecting Camp Ripley with that program. Next slide. My safety guy makes me put this slide in every speech. So, my impact areas are full of explosives that will hurt you, and so, the goal is for, to inform people that I see about that, but also ask your help in the community. And we have, there are numbers on here that we can get in touch with somebody that can help. It seems like every year, we find a grenade that grandpa brought home from World War Two in somebody's house, and we end up collecting it up. And some of them aren't inert, and some of them are actually real things. So, obviously, help us, help you and help keep our public safe in that manner. Next slide. Finally, ladies and gentlemen, I'm super proud to come and speak in front of you. I hope it was worth your time, and I would gladly take any questions or comments you have, throw it my way.
Any questions?
I would just like to say, you've been really, it's been really nice working with you on the Camp Ripley Veterans State Trail and good community outreach from you, your people there and.
They asked me about it the other day, and I'm like, I didn't even think about it. They, they asked me what my position was for putting a trailhead on the museum land, which we've talked about as being a good idea, right? But, and I'm like, well, yeah, I support whatever the museum wants, but you know, the. But you know, the, the trail on the east side of the Mississippi River up to this point, it really hasn't involved me. Until then, I realized that the, the land that we're going to build the museum on is now Department of Military Affairs land. And so it does involve me. So I, I'm interested in helping us figure that out, so.
Thank you for coming and talking with us. We appreciate your time. And thanks for being a good neighbor.
All right.
Consent agenda, building report, February 2022. Dam Festival Organization, June 17 and 18, 2022. Application for exempt permit, bingo and pull tabs, approve. Parade permit, First Street East, approve. Temporary on sale liquor license, Maple Island Park, approve. Temporary roadway closing permit, portions of Second and Third Avenue Southeast, approve. Public Works Report, February 2022, receive. Reviewed financial statement, Little Falls Convention and Visitors Bureau, Schlaner, Winter &amp; Company, receive. Temporary on sale liquor license, Friends of Pine Grove Zoo, August 20, 2022, approve. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Gossiak, second by Councilmember Knopfle. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Public hearings and lettings, lettings, brush and leaf collection, City Sanitary Award. Lori.
Yes, staff requested quotes for the spring leaf and brush collection. We received two quotes, one from Bob Lemire, Rolloffs refuse some recycling. The other was from City Sanitary Commercial. City Sanitary was the low bid at $4,380. And whoops, excuse me, that's. Low bid at $4,195. So we are requesting the council award, the leaf pickup, to City Sanitary at $4,195. The date for the leaf pickup will be March 7th, rain, snow or sunshine. And they are leaving the bags behind. So when you put your leaves out, please leave a rock or brick or something. So when they empty the bags, they can put something on top so they don't blow away.
He said March 7th, would it be May 7th?
May 7th, yes. Man, this is a bad one. So yes, May 7th.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to award brush and leaf collection to City Sanitary.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Starly. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Resolution 2022-33, award bid, public improvement 390, materials, Corin Maine, award.
Good evening, Council President, Councilmembers. On March 21st, we opened bids for the material on Fourth Street Southeast. We received two bids. The low bid came from Corin Maine from St. Michael in the amount of $1,704,806.57. This evening, we are recommending approval of that so that they can order the material in preparation of the project.
Mr. President, could I ask a couple of quick questions on this or should I wait till comment?
Let's get a motion, then we'll have a comment. What is the wish of the council?
I'll, I'll make a motion in, in favor of Resolution 2022-33, award bid.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Discussion.
Yeah, Mr. President. Greg, there's quite a discrepancy here. And I'm wondering now which one is wrong and which one is right. Because if you look at, down at item number, say number 103 on, on the, on the list here, it shows a G vel box. One company has it at $350 a box. The other one is at $9,408 a box.
Yeah, so there was a number of errors in, in the second bid. Couple of things, when we first read the, the proposals, the red total was 937,000. Our contract specifically calls out that it's a unit price bid. And I, and I did speak with the second bidder in regards to that and they, they acknowledged it as well. And their software doesn't include the first one. It only reads six digits. So on a million dollar project, it dropped that first. So their intent was to be 1,937,000, I think is what it was. And so when they wrote the unit prices down, they were, ours, our contract is per foot on a lot of things. And some stuff it called out for like 100 foot, they, what they quoted us was for 100 foot of one inch copper, for instance. That's why the number in the resolution is so high is because they were quoting it per 100 foot roll as opposed to per foot, which exacerbated the problem on it. So our engineer's estimate was 1.9 million, which is close to where Corin Maine came in. That's about where the second bidder's intended price was. But because it's unit price, we have to go with the quantity that specified times the unit price that they write down to get our total. So that's the difference between the two is because of that.
So the bid, the high bid was the wrong bid. I just don't want it to come around and we're in the, doing a bunch of change orders because they, we awarded a, something and they messed up on their bidding process.
No, the, the low bid is, is accurate. The unfortunate, the second one had some math errors in there to make it as lopsided as it is.
Any other questions? Resolution, call or roll, please.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Carries.
Hold business, Resolution 2022-29, amend local option fund request, adopt. John.
Thank you, Council President. As we've spoken in the work session, we're looking at amending our dollar amount in the request for the local option sales tax to state legislature. There have been a number of other communities that have had to do this due to project cost inflation. And ours is no different. Another factor is that when we were originally looking at this, we were in 2018 and looking at a project that was a little bit smaller. So with the project scope and most of it being on the inflation side, we're looking at a higher project dollar above. Now, the most important element of this is that projections for what we are generating local option sales tax revenue of that half spent sales tax would actually, we should actually comfortably achieve the $33 million number. And how I can say that confidently is that the county has actually been collecting this local option sales tax out for four years. And there's, based on their actual collection and the comparisons of the two sales tax analysis that we completed at roughly the same time back in the 2017, 2018 timeframe, I believe that we will adequately receive 33 million, the 33 million within the 30-year timeframe. This also does coincide with where our inflated project costs are looking to be. So we would need to pass this resolution, submit it to Senator Zoka and work through the amendment process of the legislature or to get this corrected so that we can offer on the ballot the actual $33 million number versus the $17 million number. If not at this time, then we certainly have to look at the project scope and we have to talk about that very clearly during the election process that $17 million isn't going to be adequate to construct the stability that we talked about in the concept a couple of weeks ago at the work session with the local.
What is the wish of the council?
Council President, I move to adopt Resolution 202022-29 to amend the local option fund request.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Starly. Any discussion?
Yeah, a quick question. John, if this goes through and we build a nice recreation complex, are any, are any of these projections on, on, on revenues that would be generated? Is any of these estimates based on the increase that would come with that recreation center and tournaments or other events that are held inside there?
No, we are not assuming that building this will generate additional sales tax revenue. So we're not, we're not planning on this as a hopeful number. This is based on actual current, current dollars that, that were collected, that have been collected. As I spoke in the work session, if we would have, the, the county received $2.2 million in local option sales tax revenue in 2021. By comparison and proportion amount, based on the previous analysis, we would have probably been close to 1.4 million. So we just need to be above on the average of 1.1 every year for 30 years. So if we construct this and the sales tax revenue goes up, I mean, that just means the project is paid for a lot faster and the sales tax can go away. So the, the way that's works is either you receive, it's one, the first of, the first of the two things. Either you get to the timeframe, 30 years, and you go collect the total number that you asked for and the tax goes away. Or you collect the total number that you asked for and the tax goes away, whether, whether that happens in year 25 or year 29. So if you, you know, either way, if you get to one of those two numbers first, then the tax drop off.
Resolution, call or roll, please.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Carries.
New business, personnel. Item one, interview committee recommendation, Hannah Kirkowski, finance officer, accept and approve.
Thank you, Council President. We conducted an interview process, application interview process for a finance officer position. We interviewed a total number of five candidates. We actually brought back two for second interview. And I'm very pleased and excited to announce that Hannah Kirkowski has been, was offered the position and accepted the position. There is one element of this that is different and that will be discussed in the memorandum of agreement. But she is requesting that she have two years service credit on her vacation accrual. So the, the way that we have our accrual set up is that each, each different bargaining group has a different level of, of accrual. She's not asking to, to earn it at a different rate than any of the others. She's just looking for two years of credit applied beforehand. So I think it's after year five, then she would move to the next, next basis. So, so she would be moving up in vacation accrual after year three. She comes with local government finance experience. So she has worked in the city of Rogers, the little city of St. Joe in a brief period of time, the city of St. Paul. So we, we are very comfortable with, with that agreement. There, there is no other elements of, of this job offer that are different than what a standard employee would be starting at. So she would start at the great one, or step one in the grade that, that finance office position is. I think that's pretty good.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll motion, I'll make the motion to accept and approve the interview committee recommendation for Hannah Kirkowski.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Starly, second by Councilmember Knopfle. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Interview committee recommendation, Christine Lundberg, Administrative Assistant. John.
Thank you, Council President. Almost at the same time, we were conducting our interviews for the administrative specialist position, the new position that we have within the, the administrative office. Hence all the change in construction so that we have the, the workspace for the new person. We conducted, I believe it was, ended up being 10 total interviews for this position. We had a number of applicants, I think it was over 50. So there were, there was, there was a, the process itself. We had a primary interview, which was myself, Annie and Wendy Zoka. And then our secondary interview with the remaining admin staff. Kind of looking both for capabilities as well as a good cultural fit, good, you know, good personal, personal fit with, with the team. Since it was a new position, you know, figuring out exactly what it is going to do is going to evolve through one, somebody that, that had a breadth of experience as well as the, kind of that, that fit for the, the team on a cultural level as well. Christine impressed us very greatly in the, in the interview process and was just a clear cut recommendation for us. And we're very pleased to announce that she has also accepted the, the position as well, with no other content to use.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to accept and approve the interview committee recommendation for Christine Lundberg.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Memorandum of Agreement, Vacation Service Credit Plan, Little Falls Supervisors Union, approve.
Thank you, Council President. I alluded for, before with the job offer for Hannah. This was in her request to, to move to a two-year service, to have a two-year service credit in her vacation accrual. Was this, so it's discussed with the Little Falls Supervisor Group. They have agreed to apply that through this memorandum of agreement.
What is the wish of the council?
I move to approve the memorandum of agreement for the Vacation Service Credit Plan.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Starly. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Airport Commission Recommendations. Item one, Proposal for Engineering Services Hangar Taxi Lane Design, TKDA, accept, approve. Greg.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the last airport commission meeting, the airport committee or commission is looking to work with TKDA, who is the airport engineer, to design a, an additional taxi lane for the airport. Currently, we have one out there where the private hangars are located. There were three new ones recently built. We've got two more slated for the summer, which would then fill up that taxi lane. So we would be looking for approval this evening in concurrence with the airport commission to work with TKDA in regards to the design of that, that additional taxi lane. That will give us an additional four spaces, depending on the hangar size, but four spaces for private hangars. There would be, we're also looking for a grant for this. It's a 90% federal, 5% state, 5% local, which is split between the city and the county for that grant. So this evening, we are asking the council to approve the recommendation from the airport commission for the professional engineering services with TKDA in the amount of $59,900.
What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Knopfle, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Resolution 2022-31, Execution of Minnesota Department of Transportation Agency Agreement, Federal Airport Reimbursement, adopt.
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution is, is pretty simple. Basically, we've got the federal grant, which we've already approved. It is also, it gets funneled through MNDOT and before it gets to us. This resolution and grant allows those funds to go to MNDOT, which then go to us for reimbursement. So this evening, we are asking the council to approve Resolution 2022-31.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion, pass Resolution 2022-31.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Liljegren, second by Councilmember Knopfle. Discussion. Resolution, call or roll, please.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Storey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Knopfle?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Carries.
Fairway mower rental agreement, golf, approve.
Thank you, Council President. As you called from last year that we ordered pieces of golf equipment, one of which didn't arrive until December. I am more hopeful that the fairway mower we've ordered through John here is going to get here before that, but they have informed us that there's going to be a delay. So in order to be prepared and have the piece of equipment that we had last year, I think we could, it was, we survived without it. It was huge inconvenience and it created some challenges. But we're able to, you know, maintain the golf course without that piece of equipment. However, if, once we get into the growing season, fairway mower is going to be a, an very instrumental piece that we are not going to be able to handle with only the one that is still functioning. So we're going to, you know, request the. going to, you know, request the rental agreement for a piece of another fairway mower. This is used, but through Midwest Machine here in Little Falls, and they do have it available for us. The lease agreement, or the rental agreement is for a six-month period, but any month that we return it prior to October, we give credit for. So it wouldn't be necessary that we would end up paying the full $5,250. But it would certainly make sure that we have two pieces of equipment available to us when the growing season does start. And they are looking at starting up operations of the golf course very soon. They were hopeful that they could have had the range open today, having that kind of snow. So once things start getting drier, I think we'll see if we'll have our activity going on at that golf course. And I know Ethan has got a lot of that equipment separate out there, as well as Sherry having the club out, open and ready, go for business. I was worried that they had folks out there this last weekend as well. So it is getting to be April, and I'm very excited for the pieces that are going, and it'll be a very important piece for us to have.
What is the wish of the council?
I move to approve the rental agreement for the fairway mower.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Starley. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Ordinance number 30, 7th Series, authorized and direct sale of property, Christopher M. and Elena Horakal. Introduce. Greg?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you mentioned, ordinance number 30, we're just introducing this evening. It's a direct sale of property. Little background on this particular one. Back last year, we approved a conditional use permit for a home occupation in an accessory structure at this particular residence. There was a lot of discussion with the applicant at that time in regards to being able to make that work as far as, you know, a foundation and everything. And so right now, they're looking at some other options in terms of possibly an addition onto their garage to be able to do that salon, which would then mean they would need some property from the city, which is this 15 feet that they'd be looking at. And so we are looking at selling this to them for that dollar so that they can move forward with that addition onto their property for the salon.
What is the wish of the council? I'll introduce ordinance number 30, 7th Series. I think all we need is a motion, isn't it?
Correct.
Is that for introducing?
Introduction's just a motion.
Resolution 2022-30, Acquisition of Property, Employment Enterprises Incorporated, adopt. Greg?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the other item that we've got here today is the acquisition of property. EEI currently owns, you know where their facility is at. There's, and I don't know the exact state law that requires it, but there's a state law that says you cannot have two parcels that are owned by the same companies, so in EEI's case, adjoining one another in order to have that same type of business. So what they're looking at doing is dedicating 80-foot wide strip to the city of Little Falls, which is a stormwater pond. So then it would be EEI, city of Little Falls, EEI, and then they can have their second facility. They currently own the building just to the west of them, but they can't get a permit to open it and operate it because right now they're adjoining to one another. So this would take care of that, and then they'd be able to open up that second operation.
What is the wish of the council?
Move to approve Resolution 2022-30.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Canopla, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion?
I just have a question. Greg, can you give me the why on that? What you just described to me, I understand what we're doing and why we do it, but why does that make sense?
It doesn't.
Okay.
I mean, it's a state law that, for whatever reason, they can't own property on both sides of the line and have two of their operations. So they have to have some other owner in between them, which is where Little Falls comes into play.
Is it because they're nonprofit or something like that, or?
I don't know the specifics on it.
All right. Well, we're going to make it work. We won't dig deeper into that.
Call or roll, please.
Hercock?
Yes.
Starly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Carries?
Resolution 2022-32, approve plans and specifications and call for bids, Public Improvement 390, adopt. Greg?
Thank you. I'm happy to say we're very close to getting plans, or getting bids for the project. We've got 221 pages for the plans and 246 pages for the specs. So it's quite a thick project manual and plan set for our 4th Street Southeast. Obviously, it's a big project. We are asking the council to approve plans and specs, call for bids. We are looking at bidding it on May 5. We bring it back to the city for concurrence on May 16, and then the county, because it is a county road, will be on May 24. We are expecting this to be constructions, five and a half million with a total project cost of six and a half million. The city's portion would be about $4 million, right in line with where we had talked about it at the public hearing. But obviously, it's a big project, and we're looking forward to starting it just because of the short construction season that we know we're going to be seeing. So looking for approval this night, this evening on Resolution 2022-32.
What is the wish of the council?
Motion to adopt Resolution 2022-32, approve plans and specifications and call for bids.
Motion by Councilmember Starley, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion? Call or roll, please.
Starly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushick?
Yes.
Canopla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Hercock?
Yes.
Carries?
Outdoor Recreation Grant Application, ratify and confirm. John?
Thank you, Council President. As a reminder, at the previous council meeting, we requested the resolution to approve the application process for the Outdoor Recreation Grant to Department of National Resources. Before you, as the remainder of that application process, I'd say we're kind of pretty early in the project, but the deadline for the grant application was March 31. So we wanted to at least give an effort to apply for it. So have some hopefulness that we're going to get it. The concept here is our Kuanis Club has an interest in upgrading another set of playground equipment in town. The park that was identified by them that they wish to help make improvements for pine tree playgrounds. Another of that equipment is old. The surface is actually still a PE gravel, which is not to ADA standards anymore as a playground surface, but nothing has been touched on that site for a long time. With the improvement that we've made for the dock part, we're seeing a lot more activity in that area. And I think the club's interest is also to see something that becomes a highly accessible playground. So within the application there, I had some conversations on that concept and design with Flagship Design. They partner with Landscape Structures Playground Manufacturer of Delano, Minnesota. They're also, Landscape has also partnered with Kuanis International. So they have some special deals sometimes with projects that they work together on. So wanted to confirm and ratify the remainder of the application process. The numbers in there, you know, what we've done in the past with the Kuanis Club is that the Kuanis Club committed to doing the equipment portion, and the city had committed to doing the surfacing. With this being that highly accessible playground, their, the concept design looked at putting in a surface that had the ported plate, ported plate material. That's that soft kind of, you know, your almost rubbery material, and that's on a section of the playground that would have a very highly accessible piece of equipment. The remainder of the committee engineers were fiber that we typically use around the rest of the playground. So the total dollar amount in the grant application is $20,000 from the cities, but a lot of that in-kind work that we're estimating as being city staff being able to do, and materials that we typically use the budget for, for the engineers with fiber when we do that playground replacement. So the total actual dollar amount of the city wouldn't be that cost. Rather, some of that built-out in-kind work from staff time. So, you know, with that, that's a starting point with grant funds if awarded can't be expended before October of this year. So likely, this wouldn't be a project that we would probably even do if the grant is awarded until next year. If we do get the announcement that we're not awarded the grant, then we, you know, we wouldn't be doing this project this year. We, you know, continue with the planning process and try to make sure that we work out additional funding arrangements to make this project happen. But, you know, my, knowing my relationship with the Kuanis Club, it is something that they're committed to doing. When we establish what that total project cost and dollar amount is post the announcement of this grant, I think we can, you know, very much, very firmly know what the city's overall cost is going to be, you know, noted. It's not going to be that total $20,000 that a lot of that is in-kind.
What is the wish of the council?
I move to ratify and confirm the Outdoor Recreation Grant application.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion?
Yeah, one quick comment. I hope, I don't know if anybody's looked at, I know a while last year or something, we got some information on bank shot basketball. I hope maybe that if we're going to do some improvements to some of our parks, we might look at one of them courts to put in one of the areas here. I think it would be a good addition. I think it would be unique, and I think it would be received pretty well by some of the people in Little Falls.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. City Council reports and city authorities, boards, bureaus, commissions, and committees. Anyone have anything? Announcements of item, I guess there's two. Planning Commission, public hearings, April 11, 2022, at 6:30. One is for a variance 503 Southwest 4th Street, reduce lot width and reduce lot size, Marilyn Schneider. And item two, city code amendment, Chapter 11, land use regulations, zoning and interim use permits. We will adjourn at 8:32.